Good evening, everyone. Tonight is January 25, 2023. It's 6:03 or 6:04 PM, and I'd like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting for the evening. Our first item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Letter B, is the consent agenda? Would someone like to make the motion to approve?
This is Janet. I have two things. One is, Connor, I know I sent you comments on the 11:21 minutes, like, less than an hour ago, so I don't know if you had a chance to look at those. Can you just update us? Update me?
Yeah, with those meetings, that meeting being two months ago, and me composing it 15 days ago, I haven't had a chance to go back and look at the records, so I don't know off the top of my head for sure.
Okay. Then, okay, and then the second thing is, since one of the items on the consent agenda is to approve the agenda, I would just like to comment that under the public open forum, there's a new parenthetical that Elizabeth has added, and she and I talked about this on Tuesday this week, and which I think it's a really great idea to clarify to the public what the public open forum is. But my question to her was that, for the last four years, we've operated under the sort of premise that people could speak on whatever topic they would like to during public open forum, and we have not limited people to five minutes, and so I had asked that the parenthetical be changed to reflect that. And I think that there's some concern about that being sort of a, not an official policy, but a convention that we've been operating under, which I'm disagreeing with. So I would, I'm just putting that on the record. I think that the suggestion that we talk about this at a workshop is a good one, but I just am putting it on the record that I don't think this is how we've been operating, and I welcome the opportunity to talk about it. So with that, I would move to adopt the consent agenda, but removing Items 3, 4, and 6, and removing Item 5 because I had asked for some further work to be done on the 11:21 minutes, and I did not give Connor enough time to do that.
Is there a second?
Wait a minute. You said 3, 4, and 6, and then you said 5. So we don't-
I'm removing number 5. I'm asking to table number 5 until he has a chance to do, to check on something that I had asked him to check on.
But we don't need to remove 6.
Did I say that? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say that. No, I meant to say I'm approving 3, 4, and 6, and removing number 5.
Okay, because I had a question on 4. I started reading through the notes. I didn't get to all the way through them, but I got to a section that I was kind of questioning. So if we could remove that one also? Sorry. So then we would be approving 3 and 6.
So just, then the motion maker would either have to accept that as a friendly amendment, or you'd start a new motion?
So I would accept that as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
So it's moved and seconded. Any other questions? Or discussion?
Who seconded it?
I'll call for the vote.
Trying to figure out, I wasn't here in November, so I'm not voting on that.
But we removed, we removed those two. We removed the notes from-
Okay, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Nay.
And I'll vote aye. All right. Moving on quickly to Letter C. Public open forum. Is there anyone here who wishes, or online, who wishes to address the council in public open forum? Seeing no one in the audience and no little hand signal on the screen, I'll take that as a no, and we'll move on to Number 8, the Planning Commission Report.
Mayor? I just had a question on that. With that wording, like Janet was talking about, so all that we'd have been taken out on that previous consent agenda would have been the five minutes? Portion of that, Janet, was it?
No, what we, I think what we had asked is that we would table approval of the two draft minutes, and we would then approve the agenda and approve the bill pay, and I was just making a statement. I wasn't asking for a change on the agenda.
Okay. Gotcha. I mean, if possible, can we put something in there about talking about, you know, personal political agendas, like what happened at the last meeting? Where someone came in and talked about another candidate that ran for, because I could see that going sideways if, in the future, like, we could be here all night if people are going back and forth, talking about whoever one of us it could be, you know? So.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the previous council did set up a fairly detailed policy for, it was in writing, it was out on all of the tables, for the open forum. I don't remember if it had anything about political speech. One of the things that you can do in the workshop is we can give some guidance on kind of what's in and what's out, what is considered First Amendment. People don't necessarily have a First Amendment right during the agenda to speak on any subject. They're to speak on matters that are before the council. In open forum, they're able to bring issues of concern to the council that can then later be addressed. But I think that's all fair topic for a workshop, you know, workshop rather than tonight, and we can give some guidance on that, both the history, the longstanding practice, and the kind of what's in and out of bounds.
Yeah.
Would that be helpful?
I just, you know, I could see if, you know, somebody wanted to rebuttal it, they come in and they're speaking forever, you know?
Yeah, generally, it's been pretty rare that we've had political commentary in this forum, in the council chambers, but as you know, particularly during election season, it can come up, and I think it would be good to have a clear set of guidance on that if you're going to update the open forum, or even the meeting rules. I mean, you know, I would say, don't limit it to the open forum discussion. You might as well consider what other meeting rules you'd like to have so that it's clear to the public. You know, just as a matter of decorum, it's really important that you have, you know, you always try and run a meeting with clear set of expectations for everybody, so it's probably a good topic for the council to consider.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So then we'll move on again to Number 8. The Planning Commission Report. Ron will give the report, and this will be regarding an interim use permit application for 5551 Pine Street. Ed Lauterbaugh, a dog kennel request, and it's pages 1 through 24 in our packets.
Well, good evening, Mayor. It was a pretty quick night at the Planning Commission meeting. In fact, the shortest one I've seen in four years, but most of you were here, so you probably heard what went on. But Mr. Edward Lauterbach is applying for another IUP for a dog kennel license. He's been a resident in our city, well, since 1990, he got his first one, so this is his third 90. Would that be his third or fourth?
F.
89 to now, his third license.
To Matthew.
He thinks about four, three or four.
Okay. And for everybody's, that's Ed over there on the left up there, and his son. I forgot-
Kyle.
Kyle. Kyle is his son. Anyway, they've had that for, this will be their fourth application, and we haven't had any complaints or anything on it in the last, as far as we know, nothing, Sheriff's Department, nothing. The Planning Commission recommends that it gets approved, and other than that, there was just a few little items on the conditions that were redundant, and they were cleared up on the second page. So that's about all that I can say on this IUP.
Yeah?
So this is Sue. I did review everything in here, but I also live off of Pine Street, and my daughter went to school with Mr. Lauterbaugh's son, Bobby.
His oldest son?
Yes. So I've never heard any issues over the years. He's been a good neighbor and a good dog owner, so I'm in favor of it.
All right. So I'll make the motion to approve an interim use permit application for a dog kennel at 5551 Pine Street for Ed Lauterbaugh, based on the planner's report dated 1/20/2023, findings of fact 1 through 15, subject to conditions 1 through 29, for a term of 10 years. Is there a second?
Rob will second.
So it's moved and seconded. Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Sorry it's so short. You could stay until 9 o'clock if you want.
Oh, no.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other meetings?
That's it?
Not for 10 years.
Not in 10 years?
Unless you want to. We're here every Wednesday. So we're on to Number 9. Code compliance inspector position. It's, we had an email on Monday, and Elizabeth, I think you're going to start with this? And it looks like this, if anybody downloaded it.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, you received an email from me on Monday, and the one that is before you has a few tweaks to it, so there might be a couple of word changes and such, but the sentiment of the report is still the same. During our budget meetings, we talked about code compliance, and we talked about it in, under the umbrella that we've had several issues, and it's come before the council in several different ways, whether it was a public nuisance complaint, or whether it was from the Planning Commission that conditions weren't being inspected for conditional use permits and such. And so we really talked about, at the budget meetings, an overarching need for compliance in many different areas, and not just for public nuisance. And while public nuisance is, has come to the forefront, especially for some property owners when it's in their immediate neighborhood, and we've talked about some isolated situations where it's been going on for years, and how are we going to address it? So we looked at some things in that vein on how we can change what we do as a city to address public nuisance. And one of the things that you did do early on is you adopted ordinance about abatement, and we are going to use that as a tool in order to address nuisance. And while that's a great tool to use, you still need a person doing the inspections and the legwork in order to use that tool and to implement that tool properly. So during the budget discussions, we talked about putting in the dollars in order to fund either a position or some sort of venue to address those issues. We talked about adding a staff position. In the past, we've used the CSO, we've used Minspect, and they really haven't been able to specifically address issues quick enough, and I think all of you have gotten emails on one case or another where there's been a public nuisance either ongoing, and really wanting the council to address it, and looking at the staff, and while we have staff members, we really didn't have one person that that was their sole responsibility, was compliance. And so we found ourselves that we weren't addressing complaints quick enough, or we weren't looking at permits quick enough, and trying to do it in the aftermath, it's really hard trying to fix something that's already happened. So in that vein, we said, at the budget meeting, we said, you know, we talked about it, we offered a suggestion, or the Personnel Committee offered a suggestion saying we should have a person do it, and we met with another city that addressed it in that manner, and then we offered to the rest of the council, saying, if you've got other suggestions, we're open to them, and we'll certainly implement them if others have ideas. I haven't received any other ideas or suggestions, and at this point, we don't, we no longer have a CSO because we did change the law enforcement contract to exclude the CSO from that contract. And so now, we put, or I put together the memo indicating that what would, what would this person do? I listed the 10 things that they would primarily be responsible for, and then the Personnel Committee put together the job description. The job description didn't change very much from last year, when we talked at the budget meetings, because there was a great outline of what that compliance officer would do. I think what we've been tossering around is what the title was going to be, and in this case, we've indicated that we think the title should be code compliance inspector. So with that, I know that code enforcement is one of those things that it's in line with an inspector-type position, so whether you're a building inspector, a fire inspector, housing code inspector, they're all, they're all inspector-type positions, and code enforcement is just one of those other ones where you, where the type of skills and abilities are the same, and in this case, we looked at that overall to establish a salary scale, and where would they line up in pay equity. Code enforcement is a requirement of the local government, and so whether you assign it to law enforcement, a CSO, or a staff member, it is our responsibility to enforce our own codes. And so in that case, what I did was I put together 10 of the things that they would be responsible for, and this was just, kind of just showing the 10 topmost things that they would do, and they're all embedded in the job description. I just brought it to the forefront, and then included the job description and the job posting. So my recommendation is to approve the job description for the coding clients inspector, and then approve a new 40-hour position, and I know the question came up before the meeting, whether it was budgeted, and it is in the budget. It might be in several different places of where we piecemeal the money to, because we took the money from the CSO, the $8,000, from there, we, last year, we put in $12,500 to pay from Minspect to do inspections. So we piecemealed the money together, but we did put enough money in to cover this new position. And then lastly, because it's a new position, you would direct me to post ads, review applications and such. So I am a city administrator, I'm not a city manager, so it is a responsibility of the council to establish positions, but once it's established, then we move forward unless there's a different direction. So I'm happy to take questions.
Anybody with questions?
Yeah, so this is Rob. Question on the budget, then. So we have, we had the $12,500 from the Minspect, and the $8,000 from the CSO, so we're looking at about $20,000, $20,500? Or where's this extra money?
And then I put $50,000 in the admin budget, yeah.
Sure. It was in what, the admin budget? I don't see this as an admin position on me, that's why I missed it.
Yeah, it, you know, in admin, so we only have two or three places where wages are, so you have admin, public works, economic development, and there's slight wages in what I would call public safety, which is recycling. So there's only certain areas, so we haven't come to a point where we have broken it out to individual departments. I mean, eventually we will, if we got a little bigger.
Sure.
Especially if we have revenue sources. And that's where the building does. The building I do break out because that's reimbursed with building dollars, and we also think that there will be some building revenue for this position to do the zoning inspections that are required by building permits. So let's just say, as an example, for Love's. You know, Love's required a whole boatload of inspections for Minspect to do on the buildings, but it also required a landscaping inspection, you know what I mean, and all of the things that we required for zoning, and so they needed additional inspections, and so that this person would do that. Minspect was doing it, and we were paying them too. We were paying them at $65 an hour. So it's not like we weren't, it wasn't getting paid for, it just wasn't getting paid through our budget, it was getting paid through the building permit. So there is, there's a component of that that we haven't broken out before, but we will now, because that will go into revenue for this position, because we would be breaking that out. So whether we paid Minspect or we're paying our own person, it's the same inspections that we're doing.
Okay.
For those kind of, for those kind of things associated with building permits.
So one more question, then. Currently, I believe Public Works is doing like sewer connection inspections, because that wasn't part of Minspect's thing? Is that something that's going to be responsibility of them to?
You know, Jim, you know, I know that you have that in your department, and it has to do with water meters and some other things, and I-
Pressure testing and-
I think at this point, we'll keep it with this.
Okay.
I mean, not saying that that person wouldn't be trained, because there may be some time that we're not here that he needs to do it, but I think at this point, we've taken it, and we're comfortable with it, and we know more about it than anyone at this point, so we'll probably just stay that way, but-
Okay.
Probably still trained.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
This is Janet. I don't have questions, I just wanted to make a comment. So, you know, I agree with everything that you said, Elizabeth, but one of the things that I think, I just want to make sure gets addressed too, is that there's been a fair amount of discussion during our budget meetings and workshops on this position, and we took those comments, primarily the comments regarding this as being potentially punitive or perceived negatively, and we've modified the job description to reflect that it's really more intended to be educational and to be, you know, driven by the desire to help residents and businesses become compliant. So I just wanted to make that comment, too, that that's really the perspective that this position is coming from, and the wording had been modified to reflect that.
Okay.
Yeah, and so this is Sue. I guess my only comment was, you know, when we had talked about it months ago, I don't know if it was three months ago, I was in favor of it, and I know there was some opposition, but I have done, you know, a lot of looking, like, what cities have them, what do they have? I mean, every city has one, and Elizabeth, after your explanation, that we're really responsible for enforcement. I mean, it's not a question of if, but it's a question of, you know, what does a position look like? So I think that, you know, how you laid it out, I think, looks really good, and I'm in favor of it.
Ron, you got anything, Ed?
Well, this kind of threw me off a little, Elizabeth, because I didn't know much about compliance officers, and like Sue, I started looking around, and I was kind of stunned when I seen law enforcement tied to it, that name and stuff like that, and I started thinking about it, and I, and then I started looking. Is this more of a person that would be almost like a building inspector? I say that only because they throw law enforcement in there, and I'm kind of concerned that how do the two match? But at the same time, you're talking about building codes and zoning and stuff like that. And my reason to go on that far is because I see on one of the job, a bachelor, preferred requirements, a bachelor's degree, and I look at it, and I look at a starting police officer right across the freeway with a two-year degree, will make, start off at $34 an hour, and in four years, he'll be making 48 or 45, and if you go down to Blaine, I just don't know how we're going to find a person unless the law enforcement is a low side of it, and the zoning and all that other knowledge is more so of the job. The only thing I look at is that if you're in enforcement, like I think Blaine or Ham Lake calls, there's a code enforcement officer. And he's also the zoning guy, too. But I just, it threw me off when you say law enforcement, but that's the way I started finding it everywhere.
And in there, the skills and abilities, you know what I mean, kind of cross, because our ordinances are laws, and some of them are state statute, because all the firearms and the hunting and all of those rules are what we go by state statute for those. And so as the local jurisdiction, that is a lot of times what the nuisance calls we're getting, you know? And yes, we call the Sheriff's Department. You know, when it's criminal, we know the line, and we do call, you know, the Sheriff's Department, and they will, they will take care of it. But the dog barking and all of that kind of stuff, we, you know, we take care of. So the, and it is crossed. I mean, if you look, a lot of the communities, they have the zoning compliance and the code enforcement, it's usually the same person doing it, because you're, that's what you're doing, you're enforcing codes, or you're enforcing the rules or conditions that you've laid out in permits. And if I'm not mistaken, Bill, the conditions are lawful, right? The conditions that we set-
Yeah, they're legally binding.
They're legally binding.
They have the force. Once you establish a condition in a conditional use permit, it has the same force and effect as, you know, an ordinance, because you've legally incorporate that in the approval. And I think one thing to point out is, a lot of cities, you know, slightly bigger or even much larger than you, would have within their zoning office, they would have an enforcement officer. Elizabeth, I think, played that role for many years, and so it's not unusual that with zoning, you have an enforcement officer who would run out to the home, and I think, as Councilmember Heckland said, they're there to help, you know, they're to guide people, you know? You can't have 33 trailers, you know, in your driveway or something, and here, you know, we'll give you some time to take care of it. But that is often part and parcel of the zoning office, and then it bridges to the building department, because those two work together. So that's, it's not unusual, and it's more typical that it's not law enforcement. It was only law enforcement here because we had that opportunity with the CSO officer to assign that officer those responsibilities. But even before that, it was, we would, you know, when we were much smaller, the zoning administrator, Elizabeth again, would contact the sheriff's deputy, you know, and say, write a ticket. That is potentially more offensive to a property owner than, I think, what you're trying to establish now.
So this enforcement officer, he won't have the legal authority to write a ticket? He would have to see the attorney?
I have the, I have the ability to write out the ticket as a zoning administrator, and then it goes to the Sheriff's Department, so it would be that myself or the deputy before we would actually issue a ticket. Now, they might be the person that testifies, because they're the ones who are the witnesses to everything, but the ticket actually comes from the office and/or the deputy.
Thank you. And then one other, I'm all for compliance. Just so everybody knows, I think in the last four years, being on the Planning Commission, five members have left so far, but three out of the five have always said, why do we do these ordinances if nobody's enforcing them? And they're not with us. I'm not saying that's why they left, but that was one of their statements all the time, and it was mine, too. We write these ordinances, and it's like a business down on Lake Drive there that needs a fence, and we're all hopped and ready- And we're all hopped and ready to have that new building there, and there it sits with no fence and nobody approaching them. But I am, I'm all for it. I just didn't know how law enforcement, how it was structured and how it came into. And, and I worry, and, and if I had my choice on hiring anybody, it would be a mature person. And I say that only because they might have got some life abilities, that skills from being older or whatever. Because if you hire somebody, and I've gone through this through hiring process of law enforcement officers, when you do the background, you think you got Mr. Wright or Mrs. Wright. And then, you get out there, and you got some jerk. And you didn't catch it in a psychological, you didn't catch it in an interview. It just bloomed into it. And then, you have to, so that, that's all that I'm concerned about. But I'm all for it. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor and Council, so when you're, you're posting job descriptions, you can talk about experience. We don't generally talk about age. So, just to, you know, clarify, that's why you won't see something like that in the, in the, in the posting. But certainly, experience is a, is a big and reasonable part of the, the interview.
And this is Janet. I just wanted to also clarify for Ron. You know, when we started looking at this position, I looked at a lot of different cities. And if the city had a, their own police department, then oftentimes, they would utilize their, you know, a, a position within their police department to do this work. But for cities like us who don't have their own police department, then oftentimes, it is part of the, the planning and zoning department, and you hire someone to do it. So, I think that, that tended to be, at least in the cities that I looked at, that's kind of how it fell out. And then, the title sort of follows. If it's a, in the police department, it's an officer. And if it's not in the police department, it's an inspector or an official.
Thank you.
Well, I have another question then regarding Ron's comments. We don't have anything in here about how much experience they need. And is that something that we should add? At least, I couldn't find it. And a lot of times, there is on job postings. You need five to ten years, or they have a number on it.
On the very, on the very last page, we have two years of experience enforcement of zoning laws and building codes. But Ron, if, if you're thinking that you want someone with more experience, you know, certainly, we can do that. I, I'm looking at the, the dollar figure that you gave us earlier, thirty-four to forty-eight dollars an hour. So, if someone's making forty-eight dollars an hour, how many, how many years of experience is that?
Well, that, they're usually, they're, they're four-year. They reached a peak at four years. And I mean, there's so many different variables. I mean, they get longevity. After ten years, they get another three percent, and it just, you know.
So, this, so this range you gave us is, is someone that starts, and then in four years, they, or they start at thirty-four, and then by four years, they make forty-eight?
Well, no, that, that one will be forty. I was looking at Lake Forest Lake over there. They start at thirty-four, thirty-six. And they get a peak in four years at forty-five, ninety-six. But if you go to Blaine, they start higher and peak quicker.
Well, so like on that though, Ron, our, our previous building inspector, I don't think he made forty bucks an hour, you know, on that. He was doing this as well.
Right. I mean, the wages, I did notice through all the cities I looked at, that the wages weren't like cops. Don't get me wrong on that.
Okay.
I'm just saying that when you put a four-year degree with a law enforcement in the advertisement, you're knocking off, everybody's got a two-year college that could cross the street, go get a job and make more money. So, I just can't understand why somebody with a four-year degree, unless, that's why I was trying to figure out, is it more building experience? And law enforcement just happens to be, I happened to take a few courses, like two-year, I got a degree, and went on. And, and I look at also that there's a lot of people in midlife that like to change jobs, you know, whether they're a contractor or whatever. And maybe this would be up their alley, but they'd look at it, say, geez, I have to have four-year degree. I, you know, I'm not even going to apply. I mean, experience, you can, we used to always put in experience preferred, but never put a year or nothing like that.
Well, you're kind of on to this. There's something there because like, like our two building inspectors that I've worked with personally, they've both retired from a city, and now they're working for Minspec, right? So, we might find someone like that that's retired from another city and wants to get a little extra.
Well, you, you might. That's, I, I like, I went back to the thing. I, I think this is more building-oriented human beings, you know, that construct things. Most police officers don't have that. But when you put law enforcement there, it kind of drew me right in with the idea that, wow, wait a minute here. I got a four-year degree in law enforcement. I'll go do this.
So, I'm going to, I can speak to this. I mean, there's, there's the minimum, and then there's the preferred. So, the preferred just means we would, we would rate them or, or, or consider them as a, as a candidate with more credentials with the bachelor's degree in, in law enforcement. When we have equivalent to graduation from an accredited four-year college, oftentimes, we'll substitute experience for some of that. Most, most employers will do that. So, they'll say, you know, it might be more clearly worded, but, you know, they can say four-year degree or combination of degree or coursework plus experience to equal four years, or eight years, or six years, or whatever it is. So, I think the point is that we have a minimum requirement, and then we have a preferred requirement. The minimum does not require a four-year degree in, in law enforcement. It, it would, like coursework in law enforcement, that could be psychology, that could be a lot of different things. And I think, to your point, because this is a real people-oriented position, you want someone who's got some background in, you know, being able to communicate well, de-escalate situations, things like that. And so, that.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. That's what this whole position looks like. We need somebody that can talk to people and don't walk in there and let their anger get their anger going. Before long, you got two people that are angry. But I don't know how you find those people. They're hard.
Well, you start with a posting. And then, when you start interviewing, you know, we, we craft the questions to get at those kinds of skills. And everybody gets asked the same questions.
Do we do background checks on these people? And when you say background, just through NCIC, and that's it?
Through the sheriff's department.
Okay. So, we're just looking at criminal history?
Yeah.
Okay. You don't send anybody out to knock on their old employer's doors and ask them questions, or?
We do reference checks, but no, that it doesn't, it doesn't do that kind of a background check. We don't have a, we don't hire, I know what you're talking about, where you hire a company to do that, but we've not done that.
I, I don't. I just, it's just different world here for me. But that's the way we used to do it, you know, just to see if there is an anger problem or maybe.
Well, it's a very familiar world to me. So, that's part, part of being on the Personnel Committee.
So, Ron, when you were, when you were an officer, were there things like DISC assessments and things that were done on a prior, like a basis?
I'm sorry, what?
A DISC assessment where they run you through a, you know, a training to kind of find out what your personality is, and.
Well, they do.
You either get labeled an A, or a C, or a D, and D's being, you know.
Well, all police officers got to go through a psychological.
Yeah.
And when they go through the psychological, they take the test, and the psychologist sends the chief the test. They go through an oral board where we give them situational questions. And then, if they get a background check done on them, we do, it's probably a forty-hour where you go to the, where they went to high school all the way up. And then, eventually, if they get hired, then they're on a probationary period and a field training period for about a year. And any time during that time, the chief can fire them. It's not fire and just let them go. It doesn't have to give a reason. So, it could be his personality or her personality or whatever. So, I, like I said, maybe I got law enforcement too much into this, and it's, but that's, when I seen the law enforcement, it kind of just.
Yeah. This, this person has to really be a people person. I think when we talked about this, this was not, you know, we want to, we want to write tickets on everybody. That isn't, that isn't, the, the goal here is to work with people to get into compliance. I mean, that, and to work with them, you know, whatever we need to do to help them to get to, to achieve that goal. And statistically, most people want to comply. They just don't, they don't have the tools, they don't know how to do it, you know what I mean? It takes too long, they don't have the money. I mean, there's a laundry list of different reasons why maybe they can't achieve that goal. Then, you have the one percent of people that there's just nothing you're going to do, you know what I mean? It's just, and, and that, you know what I mean? And that's where we've been at our wit's end, where we've said abatement, or, you know what I mean? There's some other measure that we need to take because there isn't a way to, there isn't another route to take. So, this person has to be patient, willing to work with people, you know, again, work through problem solving, sitting down with them and saying, what's your plan? You know what I mean? Going back out there, working with them. So, we, we want them to have a pleasant, you know what I mean, relationship. Because again, the end goal is to get them into compliance. The end goal is not to make them pay a fine and start over again. At least, that was my, my takeaway from the budget meeting.
And I will agree with you, Elizabeth. A big part of what all of this, it has been needed for some time, but also a big catalyst is your neighborhood with the swimming pool guy and the junk trucks and all of this stuff. So, we heard it, and we heard it. And we started slowly going through the steps, and four years since we've all started. And there's still junk trucks there. And their swimming pool finally got fenced. If there was somebody in this position to, and this was his job, you know, you're not kidding. You don't want your kids to drown in that guy's pool.
Right, right.
Why do you have to worry about it? Why do your neighbors have to see what they see? Just because some guy doesn't want to, or can't, or won't, or refuses to do what he's supposed to do, this position will, if this is, somebody's hired for this, this is their job, is to see. Today's Monday, he's back on Friday, he's back a month from now. The letters are written, the judge gets the filings, whatever they have to do, so that this just doesn't go on. Why should you guys have to put up with that for four years, or longer?
Yeah, I get it. But I feel like that guy's, that guy's going to have to go through the same process that the CSO and Jessica went through. It's where we got to the court system is where things got all screwed up, right?
But maybe. Hopefully, this fellow, if he's, does, person, man or woman, does his job properly.
I do, I do understand what you're saying there. But yeah, I mean.
It would move it along faster.
The cop was at their house every week, and he still didn't do nothing. I think we just needed to make a motion to tear everything out of there, you know? But the court system wouldn't let us, allow us to do that.
I think there was multiple things with that example. I mean, a big part of it, though, was not being able to, not having the staff to follow up in a timely manner on the timeline.
Sure.
And it was, it was fit in between everything else that gets asked of our staff to do. And this will remedy that problem because that will be this person's job. But you're right. I mean, if you get to a point where it is going to go to court, then you're at the mercy of whatever the court calendar is and the process there. Hopefully, that will be a rare exception because you'll be able to solve the problem before it gets to that. And that's the whole point of it. And also, I think the thing that we haven't really talked much about is the compliance with the conditions on, you know, the CUPs and IUPs that we issue. I mean, that's probably a bigger part of this person's job than the nuisance complaints. And, you know, I mean, all of us have come back to Elizabeth and said, hey, I just drove by X, and I don't see that they did Y that we said they were going to. How come? And she'll go, oh, well, I don't know. Maybe, well, I'll call. And then, weeks and months. And then, by the time you find out, you know, it would require them to start all over again, and nobody wants that. This person could get introduced right up front. Hey, if you have any questions about what you're being asked to do, here's your contact person. Elizabeth's a contact, this person's a contact. That, you know, ideally, you're going to catch those questions before they've bought the fence or put in the whatever, and you, or painted their building, or didn't paint their building. And, and, you know, you're not trying to remedy something after it's already happened.
So, I guess I, I got a question because we keep, we allude into the fence, and I think we all know which one that is. They used to have wood chips there and all that type of stuff, right? When we issued a permit for them to move in there, right, wouldn't that then have been the responsibility of the building inspector before he finaled that out to make sure that fence was in place?
The building.
I mean, fence is part of a building inspection.
So, the, when Leon was here, yes, it, he, we included some of the zoning issues, and he, on behalf of the zoning staff, would, would do that. Minspec, unless you tell the inspector what you need the inspection for, they only do the in-building inspections for which they're called on. So, if it's the framing inspection, the whatever, so they only do the building inspection. So, you would have to tell them individually, you know, you're looking, you know what I mean? You're looking for landscaping, or you're looking for fence, because it has nothing to do with building code. That has to do with the zoning code. And this is, I think, probably the biggest change that we've had, having Leon left, because he knew, he knew, because we talked before he left, all the things I wanted him to do. You know what I mean? Where now, I never see the inspector. The inspector is in, you know, and so, unless we wrote out the list, and the problem is, when they're calling for inspections, they're not calling for a zoning inspection. They're calling for a building inspection, and it's that sub who's calling. So, we found out it was not only an issue with calls, but then, it was a timing issue. Because I don't know when they're doing landscaping. And no one is calling me for an inspection saying, oh, I'm the landscaper, and now I'm putting it in, because I'm not, I'm not coordinating landscaping. I'm not coordinating putting in a fence. And so, the first time I know they're putting in a fence is when someone's calling me and saying, you know, that really doesn't look like the fence in the picture. And by that time, the fence guy has already bought the materials, already put it in, is practically done. And then, and then we're trying to tell him that it didn't match. And then, he's like, well, I'm just a subcontractor. You know, I was hired by so-and-so. So, there's a disconnect there that we need to bridge back. And we need to know upfront. So, when the building permit comes in, we give the building planning people, Minspec, that. And then, we give the, this person, here's all the zoning, you know what I mean, requirements that need to be looked at. When they put the driveway in, you have to make sure the culvert's the right size. And you have to make sure that, you know, XYZ needs to happen, and, and the first wall elevation has to be this much. I mean, all of those things are zoning things that we've tried to piecemeal together in the last year, and it hasn't worked very well. And, and subsequently, conditions aren't being met. And by the time we find out, nobody wants to spend the money to go fix it.
Elizabeth, isn't it correct, though, with this position, then, the zoning, the compliance officer will be checking with the building official and vice versa, so that you have that leverage? I mean, there, there's no better time, right, to get a fence in when someone wants a certificate of occupancy. So, your, your bridge back means that you're going to recreate that, what Leon did in both cases.
And it was, because he used to come, he, he used to come back and say, I'm about, I'm doing the final. I'd be like, wait, here's my list. And I would highlight all the things on mine. And then, he would come back and say, well, they don't have enough parking spaces. This isn't marked. They don't have handicap stuff. And I'd be like, no CO.
Right.
And, and so, but he knew that. He, he knew when those inspections were taking, taking place. And I, I don't have that bridge, I don't have that bridge now.
But even when we did have that, it didn't always work. I mean, you know, Bear Homes was the perfect example of that. So, I think, you know, his priority was the building inspection. And he was busy, and he had a lot to do. So, he didn't always have time to do those other, those other things. And again, that's what this position will, will remedy.
And, and that one, that one in particular, I, there it was, the original plans came through zoning, and then, there was a change order. And the change order didn't come through zoning. And that's why Leon thought everything was good. And, and that's, that's how that one was missed. And the contractor didn't realize the conditional use permit had that con, I mean, there were a couple of things in that one that were just, like, how did this happen? And it happened through a change order. And, and again, when you have someone here, it's much easier to catch those things because we're all here, and we all know what the permits are here. And so, And so, hopefully, those will, those types of things are caught before it happens. And we did catch it on loves. Somebody ordered the wrong materials, and I'm like, "You don't, you don't have, you don't have a green building. That's not what was approved. We don't build green buildings." And, and someone just haphazardly thought it was okay, and they ended up returning all of those materials and putting the materials that were approved on it. But had we not caught it at that point, that building could have hadn't been half-built by the time we figured out that someone had ordered the wrong materials. And, and it wasn't malice on anyone's part, just someone thought that it, we didn't, it wasn't regulated, and it didn't, didn't matter.
Was that on the speed code portion?
Yes.
So, the bottom line is, the city is busy. People are building a lot. There's continued building into the next year, and hopefully, the next year. We don't have Leon. I don't think he's coming back. So, so let's make the, and we have the money put aside to do it. So, let's try to find somebody. And for those of you who do the interviews, interview carefully. I don't care if they're young or old, as long as they do their job. And, and try to catch this before it happens, because still, we have the wrong kind of fencing at the place we're talking about, and the other fence isn't there. And we can talk about it till we're 75 years old, and until somebody goes there and says, "You must do it," nothing is going to change, and follow through that it's done.
Which will take several inspection, you know, several times to talk to someone.
Yep. So, we've had quite a bit of discussion. I'll make the motion, three of them, I guess. I move to approve the job description for the code compliance inspector position as presented, with changing all references from official to inspector.
Janet, a second.
And we have a second. I have what? I have a question. May I have a question? If there's any other discussion, this is it. Back to Ron's thing about graduation from accredited, four-year college or university, blah, blah, blah. And the second sentence says, "Two years of experience in the enforcing, enforcement of zoning laws." What if you just put that second sentence first? Anybody? Elizabeth or counselor? It does.
Yeah, you're trying to emphasize the experience over the credentials. I, I think that's fine. I mean, it's not a, it's not a legal issue, it's just.
I mean, does-
A point of emphasis.
If you're the best guy in the world with a big smile and a six-shooter, and you can get the job done, I don't care if you had two years of school or four years. Just do what we want done.
I'm fine with that.
So-
Elizabeth, what do you think?
I, I think, I, I'm, I'm, I think I'm following what you're doing, but are you saying that equivalent to graduation for four-year credit colleges or two years of experience?
I'm saying, start off with minimum qualified requirements. Two years of experience in the enforcement of zoning and building codes, blah, blah, blah. Exercise of investigative inspection skills, or the equivalent of graduation from a four-year college, just to put the emphasis on-
Oh, and you said "or."
Yep.
I didn't, I didn't think you meant "or."
Yeah, I didn't think you meant "or" before.
I mean, the, the bottom up to the top is a point of emphasis.
Yes, I want to move, I mean, just so some guy with two-
You want, you want, you wanna move the sentence, but we don't wanna say experience or schooling. We wanna leave it as, we want both.
I just don't want to dissuade somebody with two years of experience who might be the best person.
If they don't have-
Four years of experience. How do we say that?
Or, or you mean a four-year college degree?
Yep.
So, some, sometimes what you do is, you say, "Four-year degree, or two years of coursework, plus at least two years of experience doing ABC," to equiv-, you know, to be equivalent to a four-year degree. I mean, if, if that's what you're trying to get at, I, I thought when you started, you were just wanting to emphasize, you wanted to prioritize listing the experience first before the educational requirement. But if you're looking for substituting, then you can, you can do that. You just, you just would word it differently then, and you would say, you know, "Four-year degree, or two years of coursework, plus two years of experience doing ABC."
So, Elizabeth, I don't recall if you were comparing some of the other postings that we were looking at from the other cities, if they had both, or "or."
I don't, I don't have that with me, and I don't, you know, I didn't, I didn't look at the, at the credentialing, but there were two other postings, and I don't remember what the-
Most of them required a four-year degree.
Did they?
Yep. And, and I also think that I didn't, when, usually, when you, when you score a position, the educational requirement is in there. So, the points that she came up with for this position, I'm assuming, included a four-year degree. I, I'm not, I'm not against doing what, you know, what we talked about. I just think, you just need to be clear whether or not you think a four-year degree is important. That usually is part of the criteria for considering it a professional position.
But like Ron said, it's, maybe some cop was 50, and he wants to retire. He can come do this for the rest of his career.
Yeah, and I, and I like, and I like the idea of saying, "Four-year, or, you know, some combination of experience and education to equal or exceed the four years." I mean, we used to do that to you all the time.
Does that make sense, Elizabeth, that you could?
We can, we can rework, we-
Yeah.
Personnel committee can rework, rework the minimum qualified requirements to meet your intent.
And my only thought is, you don't wanna miss the right person, just because he doesn't have a four-year degree. He might be the best guy in the country, best person in the country. And if he only has a two-year degree, but he wants the job, and he can bicycle to work, he's the perfect guy for it.
Well, isn't the top priority here is people skills?
Yeah.
That's what we're looking for? I mean, well, you gotta be able to write a report. You gotta have some.
So, so now, how do I?
You, you can just complete your motion, and, and the direction has been given to the personnel committee.
I'm sorry?
Just, you can read your motion as you've read it, with the direction given to the personnel committee to rework that paragraph.
So, start over from the top? Even though it's been seconded?
Uh, I don't think you need to. I think the direction's on the record.
Okay.
And I think you're good.
I don't think it was seconded, though.
Yep, Janet seconded.
Yeah.
Any other discussions or questions? I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye?
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
And Jesse, aye.
So, now, we'll have another, another motion to approve the new 40-hour position to include
pay scale 2690 to 3326, pay equity point allocation of 238 for code compliance officer. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote. I'll start on Rob's end.
Rob, nay.
Oh, Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
I was trying to figure out why you're doing nay, that's the one.
And thirdly, a move to direct the city administrator to post ads, review applications, and recommend candidates to the personnel committee for interviews for a new code enforcement inspector. Is there a second?
Janet, um, second.
Any other questions or discussions on that one? Ron, I'll start with you.
I'm happy to say, yes, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
And Jesse, aye. Moving on to number 10. And I think we have a handout for that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is late-breaking, only because we spoke to the Harchenkos, actually, Megan Rogers and Elizabeth Merzko had a conversation about the apartment building, and it's, it's a good news story. So, they're not leaving us, and in this market, that is a good news story. They have two banks interested, and they have four investment groups that are looking at underwriting. So, that's good news. They have interested parties. Like everybody else, they're kinda waiting for the interest rates to shake out, and it's not just, you know, the interest rates, but where they're gonna stop raising rates. So, there's a period of stability to underwrite and approve financing. They think it'll be in the next two to three months, and so, they've asked for another 90-day extension. We would recommend that, only because having someone on the line who's interested is better than starting all over. So, there's really no cost to the city to extend the purchase agreement and see if they can uphold their financing together in, in that 90 days. You know, I always point out to them, when I'm talking to them, that you have extensions built into the purchase agreement, but they would have to pay for those extensions. So, so far, and this is the Fifth Amendment, the city has been willing to give those extensions without additional cost. They have also asked, they will form an LLC when their investors come in, and so, they've asked that any approvals, development agreements, entitlements be assigned to that LLC at closing, which we generally don't have a problem with, because once you take down the land, you've got the major asset, and, and you're gonna build. The, so the development agreement is essentially done. We have to do some calculations on connection charges, but that's done. Mostly entitlements are done. So, really, the work is on their side to, to bring investors, banks, and equity investors to the project. And, and, you know, the, the news is that they're working with serious parties.
So, that's a win-win-win, maybe.
Yeah, it, it can always roll the other way, but, you know, they haven't, they haven't moved on. They haven't moved on, and they've done what they said they would do, which is to try and bring investors to the table. They've identified a number of parties.
All right.
So, a question on that, is that, that original purchase agreement, then, there was no amendments or anything to what was approved previously? Like, what language you, you had laid out with that purchase agreement? Nothing's changed with that?
No, the only, the only thing that's changed are the dates.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the, the contingency, what we're moving out is the contingency period. The contingency period is their, their time to put everything together. Once that contingency period runs, then they need to close within, I think it's like 30 days.
So, this is Janet, I have a question. I think it was probably three or four months ago, you came back, and they actually had some additional asks, and we drafted a response to that. Did they accept that?
Yes, it was actually, I think, helpful to them, because we put down in writing the concessions that the city had given to date, and they were able to turn around and say to the investor, "Here's, here's why this deal is good." Because this, you know, this, 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 and this. And so, they never, you know, when they called yesterday, when, when Megan told me there was a conference call, I said, "Well, they might be coming back to ask for something more." But the city council was pretty clear, this is it. And they did not. And so, I think they got the message.
Good, thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the Fifth Amendment to the purchase agreement with David Harschenko as presented. Is there a second?
Ron, second it.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Rob.
Uh, Rob, aye. And I just wanna say, based on that language, can I talk on it? Well.
Yeah, right? Or not?
Have you started this, you could, you could open it up for discussion, even though we started the vote.
Well, you can open it for discussion.
Thank you. Just to speak on it before, I was reviewing that, that thing, and there, the issue I had with it was the labor standards and inferior construction on their previous projects, right? But reading through that agreement, there's, there is language in there in that agreement that there'll be a retainer held for any labor issues, if, say, somebody wasn't paid on that project, and/or if there was inferior construction. So, whether they didn't use fire-rated lumber, or something of that nature. So, I'm voting aye on this.
Yeah, Janet?
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Onto letter D, engineer report. Kevin?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
But? All right, thank you. Attorney, report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I just wanna give you an update on the legislative matters that we're working on. I met a couple of times with our team. The team that's working with you on this project, in addition to myself, is Margaret Vessel, who's our Director of Government Relations. Grady Harn, who's worked on all your matters for the last couple of years. He's a lobbyist. And then we also have Andrew Carlson, who was in the legislature until recently. He was also 20 years in the Minneapolis Public Works Department. So, he's, he knows that side of things. And he was also a Bloomington City Council member. So, he's working with us on the team. We have identified potential legislation for transportation funding. We have identified at least two authors. We've gotta make sure we got both sides of the aisle, which is good, because we have a database of cities between 2,000 population and 5,000 population. Remember, that's important, because after 5,000, 5,000 and up, you're eligible for the gas tax. And we, we made 2,000 population cutoff, because there's hundreds and hundreds of cities in the state below that, and we just didn't think that, when you get that small, that you, you know, have the ability to send people to St. Paul to be a part of a coalition. So, that was a little bit of an arbitrary cutoff, but there's some really good, when you look at the list, and we're building up a database of who their representatives are, you know, and who their administrators are, and so, we're about ready to pull the trigger on a, a joint Zoom meeting, to get all those folks on Zoom to tell them what we're doing. Before we do that, we wanna have authors identified, legislation prepared, but all of that is moving. So, I'm, I'm actually, the, the report this week was very positive. I've also reminded Margaret Vessel that we're, to talks to the tax chairs about fiscal disparities, and she will do that. The, you know, the odds with an all Democrat, Democratic body, you know, are not great on fiscal disparities, but we're gonna continue to ask the questions, since we've put two years into it. But I'm, I'm very encouraged, the, the type of language I've seen would create a permanent funding source, not just a year-to-year funding source for transportation funding for small cities. And they're combining it, the authors are looking at combining it with funding source for towns as well. So, it could be, you know, by the time you get done with this, you know, who this bill helps, it could be cities and towns across Minnesota, you know, that are represented by Democrats and represented by Republicans, and so, it becomes a bipartisan effort. And then, well, I'll stop and take questions on that, and then I have another part of my report. Okay?
Yep.
And then, the second part of the report is, when Margaret Vessel was doing her work, as she does up at the Capitol, she ran into Representative Nolan West, who now represents you with the redistricting. And he, he offered to come speak with you, and, you know, and meet you all. And so, we thought that was a nice opportunity. Also, Margaret always likes to come each year and give you a legislative update, so she would combine that. And then we thought we'd also invite Senator Michael, is it Kreen? How do you pronounce?
Croon, Green.
Croon?
Green or Croon?
Croon or Kreen? I, I didn't, I haven't, I haven't met him yet, so I, I don't know, I haven't heard his name out loud, but we would also invite your senator to come meet you as well. So, we'll work with Elizabeth and Margaret to find a time to do that, whether it's, you know, here at the main meeting, or at a workshop. I think it's probably best at, at a main meeting, because then the constituents can also kinda meet them, whether they're here in the chambers or online. So, we'll, we'll set that up in a, you know, maybe at the next meeting, if that makes sense, Elizabeth, or when it works for everybody's schedule.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Onto number 13. Mayor and city council members report. Ron, I'll start with you.
I have nothing, thank you.
Sue?
Well, this is Sue. I have my first personnel committee report to give. And we interviewed the candidate for the Planning Commission, Lynette Carver Quinn, who's in the audience tonight. And this is to fill the seat of Chris King. We interviewed her last week, and she became interested after talking with Commissioner Bobic. And Commissioner Bobic thought that she would be a great candidate. Lynette moved into Columbus in 2009, but she's from North St. Paul and was very involved in community service there and served on their Planning Commission for 15 years. So she has a lot of experience and gave a lot of examples of projects that were done in North St. Paul. And, I mean, it just seemed like talking through the examples, like, you get it. You totally understand the balance of looking at the codes and all the interests of the residents and the business owners. So it was a good interview. She likes getting to the root cause of issues, and we'll dig in. And I really liked your example where you got involved with the school board. I mean, that whole example was, just told us that you are willing to go that extra mile to do the research, and so that was all good. So I guess, just for those reasons, I, the Personnel Committee recommends to appoint Lynette Carver-Quinn to the Columbus Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
This is Rob. I'll second it.
So it's moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion?
No, I would just say that's exciting to have somebody with that much experience from a bigger city, so that excites me. And I know you've probably worked on some pretty big projects in North St. Paul, so welcome.
Anyone else? I'll call for the vote. Rob, you can start.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye. So we are approved. You're approved.
She said she could start immediately, so that would be next Wednesday.
So thank you for offering to serve.
Yes, thank you so much.
And you already know it takes quite a commitment, so you won't be surprised.
Ron, you might be able to hand the chair position.
So there.
We'll wait a couple weeks.
Yeah, don't start nothing we can't finish today. And Sue, what else?
Well, I just wanted to bring up another Planning Commission topic, and this is a topic that Janet had brought up at our last meeting, and it's about assigning a council member to be a liaison to the Planning Commission. And actually, while we were interviewing Lynette, they do have at North St. Paul, on their Planning Commission, it's a six-member commission, and then they have a council member on the commission, on the Planning Commission. So I think it's, you know, that kind of reinforced our thought that it was okay. I guess I had never thought about it, but Janet had brought forth the information that we, that she found on the League of Minnesota Cities, which kind of explains, you know, really, cities can do whatever they want. They can form it however they want, they just all have to kind of agree and then put it in writing and stick to it. So what I wanted to do is kind of just walk through the three questions that we, you touched on last time, Janet, but, you know, it was more of a discussion, and I think we just want to come to a consensus of what everybody thinks so we can make a motion. So, and first of all, I just wanted to ask our legal counsel for any comments on any specific rules. I mean, I know you probably don't have specific rules at the tip of your tongue, but I guess maybe generally, when we're looking at placing a council member, is there anything to think about that might sway a decision, yes, no, or if they are a voting member or non-voting member?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I have seen the liaison role in a number of cities. It's probably kind of the minority position. Generally, there's pretty clear separation between Planning Commission and council. It's very unusual that they would be a voting member, although that probably does exist as well. One of the cautions I want to give you is the, comes out of what I call the Lisa Goodman case. And Lisa Goodman is now a retiring, I think, one of the longest-serving members on the Minneapolis City Council. And she was kind of embroiled in a matter where she indicated kind of her vote, if you will, her position on something before it came to the council. And that was kind of the basis for undoing a decision that the council had made, or certainly kind of eliminating her vote in that. And so what we always look for is that the council, as the final decision-maker, be an impartial decision-maker, and hearing all the evidence and testimony all the way up till the time you take your last vote. And so my concern with a perhaps voting member of the body, it's one thing to be a liaison where you're carrying information back and forth, but it's another where you're taking a vote at the Planning Commission level as a voting member, and then you sit two or four weeks later and take a vote as a city council member. Something may have changed in the interim, something, new information may come to light, and you may want to actually change your vote. And so you've indicated, in some senses, of Planning Commissioner, what your position is on the project, and now you have another role as a council member. Now, of course, Councilmember Hanegraff, we looked at his serving this dual role for an interim, and there was no legal prohibition on it. So obviously, there's no legal prohibition on serving as a liaison or even serving as a voting member, because we have that situation right now. So it's not that you can't do it, it's just if you do it, you know, over a long term, and I would say to Councilmember Hanegraff, you know, that you have that situation right now, you know, where you could, you could take a position, you know, as a Planning Commission member and reverse yourself as a council member, and then you'd have to explain, you know, what happened and why. So that's the only thing that I want you to think about. You know, you as council members, you know, I see you deliberate carefully, I see you write notes, and, you know, when you have a position on a tough vote, you explain yourselves. So certainly, you could explain yourself in that, in that role where you might want to change your vote or do evidence comes up. I think it's just simply easier to have a bright line. It's not a matter of, you know, there's a prohibition on it.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful. So first things first, do we want a council member on the Planning Commission? So if we could just get a consensus from each of you, and we'll go to the next step of the voting versus non-voting in the next question.
Do you want us?
Yeah, do you want to?
Just a consensus?
Rob, you?
I personally am not in favor of it, just on the basis of, it feels like we're trying to persuade what we want the Planning Commission to do, and I feel like they're their own entity, so that's why I'm just not in favor of it.
Okay. And I think, you know, I've talked about this before, so I won't belabor. My point of, I do think it's a good idea, and basically because our Planning Commission oftentimes gets saddled with questions or projects that are not just about zoning and planning, but also about policy. And that's where they have expressed dissatisfaction in spending a lot of time and effort working on things and only to have the council take a different viewpoint because we're looking at it more from a policy perspective than they were. And so by having a person on the Planning Commission, you can bring that perspective to the table for discussion, and, you know, they will hear that upfront rather than coming up with a recommendation that we end up, you know, disagreeing with for policy reasons. I also just want to mention that, you know, because the Planning Commission is advisory to the council, I mean, we don't have to take their recommendation, and sometimes we don't. And, you know, I've heard councils, not necessarily this one, but others say, you know, come back with an answer, a different answer, you know, go back to the drawing boards. So I don't, I think one person being on there, whether they're voting or non-voting, and especially if we decide to do it on a rotating basis, would have very little ability to sway decisions. I think it would be really advantageous, and we heard that from Lynette, that, you know, I think her words were, I can't imagine being on a Planning Commission without a council member on it. It was so helpful.
Ron, what do you think?
It's a tough decision. I agree with Janet on the idea. I think somebody should be there, but I'm going to step right up to, I don't think they should be able to vote. And because maybe what Rob was saying, you might be throwing your bias, even though you can discuss, you can be involved in a discussion and stuff like that, but why throw in another, it's two votes. You know, come back and vote here. So I jumped your gun.
No, that's okay. And, well, I mean, I'll give my feedback, and that is the next question. So you've already answered your second question.
Well, answered two of them.
So I'm in favor of it for the reasons that Janet said, because it was, I don't know, I'm, my day job is all about efficiencies, and it just seemed really inefficient what we did. And I think any way we, anything we can do to make things faster, easier, is better. And I don't think that having one person from the council on the Planning Commission is going to sway a decision. I just think it's going to be helpful. So, but I don't think they should be a voting member, and that's one thing that I kind of struggled with. And, but after, and after listening to Bill too, it's like, hmm, there's a lot of complexities to that. So I think, in my opinion, we should have somebody on but not being a voting member in the beginning and just see how it goes. Jesse, do you, what's your opinion?
I have a couple of inputs. One is that we've been running at three or four people for the last year, year and a half on the Planning Commission, and we've advertised and talked to everybody we could talk to and couldn't have anybody. So in the event there was something important coming up, and somebody was on vacation and somebody was sick, we would only have two people, which isn't a quorum. And I talked to you, Elizabeth, this afternoon about that. So you would have to cancel the meeting or postpone it. So if you're a person, a developer or a builder, somebody trying to do something on their property, you're adding another month's worth of delay to whatever project they have, just because we don't have a full, we didn't have a quorum for that night. So for that reason, I would be in favor of having an extra person on there, although if they're not voting, that won't make a difference. So that won't solve that. But also, I know there was a lot of frustration of the Planning Commission, who did a lot of work on different things, and then at the end, they felt they weren't understanding or weren't, they could have used some more input. And so whether it's a voting input or not, at least everybody up here has had more experience. Then now we've got three new members, one, two, three, with Barb being the fourth, and she's got experience, but the other three are brand new. So I think it wouldn't hurt to have somebody on there who knows the ropes a little bit, and again, can make things more efficient and more, here's what we're looking for, here's the ordinances, read them, let's all read them together, and make a decision and move on. And also, they are advisory to the council, so the Planning Commission can advise anything they want, and we have the final say. So I don't think you have to worry, Rob, much about people jamming their interests, making them vote one way or the other, because they're advisory, and it's up to us five up here to take their input and their researching they've done, make our decision, and pass it or not. So I don't think that would be a big thing. And to help the new people get on board faster, do we want to flounder around for another year? Well, you know, one person's been to one meeting, one person's been to two meetings. Lynn hasn't been to any meetings, so we have a pretty inexperienced group. If we could get them up to speed faster, and if you got, another person joins and you've got five people who are going 100 miles an hour, we can take the person, you can take the liaison off if everybody thinks that's good. I don't think it hurts anything. And most of us go to all the meetings anyway, so it's just another Wednesday for us. So I have no problem with it.
So I don't disagree with anything that you said. I think the, when I originally brought this up, my thought was the liaison position, because that has worked so well on our park board. But then with the turnover that we've had and the difficulty that we've had recruiting members to the Planning Commission, I mean, Pam's position was open for more than a year, and we had no applicants. That's what, that's what made me think, well, maybe we should create this position into a voting member. I wouldn't be opposed to just having a liaison. I think the most important thing I was trying to solve was a communication problem and information exchange problem, so that's my priority. But I agree with Jesse that you have a pretty green group, and although Lynn has lots of years of experience in St. Paul, she has zero years of experience in Columbus, so she does have some learning to do. Ron is going to be a voting person for three months. We've already decided that, I think. But, you know, I, maybe, maybe a compromise would be to create a position for the next year that would be a voting member, and then after a year at our next organizational meeting, we decide whether we want to continue in that vein or whether we want to turn it into a non-voting member. In that way, you know, it gives us an opportunity to continue to recruit as best we can for this position on the Planning Commission, but it kind of covers our bases in case we can't, and we end up with some absences that might end up in not having a quorum. And I think, Lynn, what you had said they did in St. Paul, and that would be another option, is that the person that was on the council only voted if there was a tie. So if it was three and three, then they cast the deciding vote from the Planning Commission. So those are some things to think about, but that's, first and foremost, I want there to be good communication and a good exchange of information, and if people are really uncomfortable with the idea of it being voting, I think, you know, the only risk we have is if we end up with, you know, either absences or people deciding after a short period of time that Planning Commission isn't for them, and then we run into the problem of not having a quorum. And, you know, I suppose we could do a temporary assignment like we did with Ron to solve that, so.
I've got a quick question, and not a question, a statement, that another thing to take a vote, and I think we've talked about it before, off the Planning Commission, is instead of, I don't know, maybe ask Lynn, did you always have to review what you did to the council every, after every meeting? Did?
No, we had a liaison, so every council.
Mr. Mayor, probably want to ask, to come to the mic.
Lynn to come up to the mic? Can you just come up to the mic?
So it's recorded for the...
I'm sorry.
So every council member was a liaison to a committee, so the park committee, the Planning Commission, whatever. So our liaison, which was helpful to help with direction and stuff like that, didn't always vote, but they were the ones that gave the Planning Commission report to the council, was the council member that was our liaison. So the Planning Commission didn't necessarily have to be at the meeting to give the report, the council member did.
So the number of years that you put on down there, did you ever have to do it that way, where somebody from the Planning Commission?
A lot of times, if we had a public hearing, we'd go to the council meeting anyway, but we always let the council member give the report.
Okay, thank you. I only bring that up because I, we never really had a template on, and I'm sure you all seen it, whoever got assigned in the Planning Commission, it was always different. And I'm sure mine was as short as could be, and then you get some that are a mile long and, you know, they, but I think that's something that takes the pressure off the Planning Commission. I think it's great that somebody from the council give the review, so I'm sorry.
Regardless if they were long or short, though, you all did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I felt that way too. Let me ask, Bill.
Yeah.
So going back to Janet's concern, could it be arranged to vote, only vote if it was necessary? So they're a liaison unless you don't have a quorum for a meeting in two weeks.
Or if it was a tie, because right now, we have four members, right? We still have one open seat?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, you could do that. I would ask, how many times have you had the situation where you haven't been able to take a vote in the last, I mean, I don't remember that occurring, so you would know as Planning Commissioners. I mean, you, I think the better approach is to establish the liaison as the first step. You want, you want good communication, and then if you run into a situation where you're, you know, you're missing a Planning Commissioner, then this council can take a vote to make that liaison a voting member until the position is replaced. I think that way you have a clear, you have clear direction that the liaison is a liaison, and if you, if you find yourself short a Planning Commissioner, then you basically deputize them as a Planning Commissioner like you've done with Ron for three months. Then, then you... three months. Then you're taking care of a problem when the problem arises. But I just don't think you've had, in my time here, I don't remember projects not being approved or going forward because of membership.
Yeah, I don't either.
So can you deputize somebody tonight, and they're ready for next Wednesday, that quickly, if it's necessary?
It's Ron. But I think, is your question if there's somebody else besides Ron?
Yes. So if you have your four people out here, and you know you're going to have a problem next Wednesday, can the board do it at this meeting, and the liaison is a voting member?
Oh, sure, yes.
Or can we deputize them at the meeting? I mean, if we find out the day before they're sick or something.
Right. No, if you had like a long-term absence, like the current situation is a good example. Ron is, you're not serving as liaison, you're actual voting member. You have a dual role. We investigated that, it was perfectly fine. I think that, what I'm saying is, and again, it's the consensus of this body. So if the consensus of this body happens to be you want to try out the liaison role, then try that out. And if you have a situation like you do now where you're short a member, then that liaison can become a voting member at the direction of the council, rather than the other way around. Because I think what's going to happen, if you do it the other way around, you're going to have a question when it's Planning Commission, do I vote or not? You know, are we short enough people where I should vote and under what rules? And you just haven't, in our experience, had many situations where that was a concern, or maybe any situations. So better to have a clear direction to the Planning Commission, that this individual from the council is here to listen and to communicate, and is not taking part in the vote. That would be my direction. But again, it's really up to you. It's up to the five of you to carve that in the way you want.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that the consensus is that we have a liaison. Everybody, I mean, Rob doesn't agree, but the majority does. And then the voting member, I think the majority is to not be a voting member. And, Bill, you kind of confirmed that. It makes sense to do it that way. So we will assign a liaison as a non-voting member, and then we have the ability to deputize somebody if needed, if there's a shortage of voters.
And if that ends up being consensus, you should take a vote on that.
I have a question. So one of the things that Elizabeth and I discussed this week, too, when we were doing our meeting, was what happens, and I'm talking to, three months after you have fulfilled your temporary assignment, and we still only have four members on our Planning Commission, and there isn't somebody who's willing or able to step into the chair, can the liaison be a chair without being a voting member?
Again, yes. And I'm just going to give you my advice, is that, again, blurs the line, right? Because now the liaison who's there to communicate is running the meeting, directing the hearings and all of that. So, you know, maybe you want to go three months and cross that bridge. Certainly, you know, anything can happen in the case of, not, I won't call it an emergency, but, you know, exigent circumstances, circumstances that require like Ron's dual role. You know, the council will figure it out, will give good guidance. But I think if you start to say, and that individual's going to chair the meeting, now that's a different capacity. You know, so you've got the liaison capacity, you've got the voting member capacity, and then you've got the chair, which really is a pretty important role. And I'm sure, you know, the thought process is, we want someone with experience and who's comfortable running a meeting. But perhaps that will kind of take care of itself in three months. Or, you know, or you'll have another discussion here in three months.
Okay.
I've got a question. So we have a liaison there. What if the liaison can't make it that night? Does the Planning Commission still continue?
Sure. I think what you would do in that case is you'd kind of go back to your role of a Planning Commissioner, would be the next one to report to the council. In other words, what you've been doing for all these years.
So you don't really need the liaison.
Well, sorry.
Go ahead. No, please.
I was just going to mention what we do on our other committees, and so we have a backup. So if I'm on the cable commission, and if I can't make it, then Ron is my backup. And so I think if we're all going to be liaisons and take our turns, there might be a time when you can't make it, and you could call me or one of the other members for that night.
Yeah, and that's a really good point, because it's something that you have experience with in your other committees, so that you're not creating a whole separate function for Planning Commission that you haven't already done on Park Board, for instance.
Good question. Okay, so before we do a vote, should we talk about our last question, or should we vote now? Because our last question is, how will we sign up on a rotating basis? Do we want to do quarters, like three months, so Ron is three months, and then the next person is three months, and the next person is three months? Which, I'll give my opinion first. I think it should be that, just because typically you have meetings on a project that are related, and it would make better sense for that person to be involved consecutively on the same project. So quarters, that's my opinion.
Makes sense to me.
That's fine for me. I go to most of them anyway, so. Yeah, it'd be no difference.
So I got a question on this. So, you know, like, in my work life, right, I typically work 55 to 60 hours a week, and you've all noticed that sometimes I'm rarely ever in person for those Planning Commission meetings, because when I ran for this, I was told those things weren't mandatory. And people had to talk to me, oh, it's only two meetings a month, you know, and we've since grown to doing workshops all the time. We're doing workshops for EDA, we're doing workshops for, you know, is there a way that there could be an alternate, or are you going to be able to be on it via Zoom? Because I do try and be on that way, right? But I don't know if we're going to continue using Zoom as COVID phases out, or, you know, and I typically try and plan my, I have to travel as well for work, so I'm trying to, you know, schedule my travel for weeks that we don't have council meetings or EDA meetings. So that falls on Planning Commission meeting weeks, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I give a little guidance to help you with this? The only meetings that a council member is required to attend are the council meetings, the workshops and the city council. So all of the other assignments that you have, that you take on, liaison to this and liaison to that, it's at your discretion. And so the council can't require council members to take on other roles other than what they were elected for. Now you've all very generously signed up for these other roles and liaison roles. So I think, I want to be clear, that each council member has a personal decision about whether they're going to serve in any other capacity other than showing up here as an elected official.
Okay. The problem with that, though, is the meeting happens before the meeting. The workshop's what sets the basis for the meeting, so everything's talked about at the workshop, and then we show up and there's motions on a piece of paper, and we just roll through the motions, you know?
No, no, I don't-
That's why I feel like-
The workshops are legitimate meetings of the council, and so every council member should endeavor to show up at the workshops. What I'm saying is, if you or any council member decides they're not going to be a liaison to the Planning Commission, it's not like you're not fulfilling your council duty.
Yeah.
So I guess more than, sorry to interrupt.
Well, I was just going to clarify that it's not mandatory that you even, that you participate in this. So you voiced your opinion that you didn't think it was, or you were, I'm not sure, but if you don't-
So kind of what I'm going back to is like, so Jesse and Janet, they rarely miss a meeting, right, like Planning Commission meetings, right? So in the event that, say, I had a conflict or anyone else did, would we be able to say, hey, I know you're going to go to the meeting anyways, can I appoint you to sit in my position for this meeting if I'm not, you know, me or someone else isn't able?
That's a legal question. Bill, yeah?
Yeah, I think if you establish that the alternate is any council member, in other words, you know, there's a liaison for the quarter, and any council member can serve as the alternate, then it's like finding a sub, right? And that's maybe what you're after, is that flexibility.
Yeah, that's really exactly what I'm after there.
And as far as your question to Zoom, we've had very favorable responses to Zoom and being able to monitor the meetings via Zoom. So it was not my intention to eliminate the ability or to offer the Zoom meeting platform. If there's something that the council felt that you no longer wanted to do that, you can certainly give me that direction, but that wasn't the intent. I still have a year's, you know, left on the subscription. I will say that, you know, we do usually have one or two people on Zoom, whether it's a council meeting or a Planning Commission meeting, people, you know, listening in.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So I think we covered everything. We're going to have a liaison as a non-voting member, and they will be serving three-month terms.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I make the motion.
I'll second it.
So it's moved and seconded. Are there any other questions or discussions? Counselor.
Did you want to list that any council member could serve as alternate?
Oh, yep.
Yes. So I'd like to amend the motion to add that any council member can be an alternate.
And a second.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, I have a comment or a question. So in a three-month period, and there's two meetings, usually per month, so that would just be six Wednesdays, alternate of our other Wednesdays per year.
Yep.
Right? Got it. So we have a motion. Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Ron.
Can I go back to the questions?
Better hurry up.
So are you involved, then, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm a board member, right?
Okay, so we got five people, then. So we only need four, right?
So we'll sign up. We'll sign up.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you also have a fifth quarter when you go into the next year, right? So you could roll into the-
Oh, roll right in.
The fifth quarter would be the following year.
Okay. We back to voting, though?
Sure.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Well, and also with five people, if you want to go to Arizona for two weeks, or a month, somebody else, anybody on the council can take your place, and nobody's missing anything. I mean, so what if he wants to zoom in from Arizona? What if he wants to go to Arizona? What if he wants to zoom in? And you already have a liaison there.
You can, I believe, under the new Minnesota rules, yeah. You couldn't, anyway, I won't get into what it used to be. Yes, you can. It's gotten a lot easier to zoom in.
So everybody can stay up to the minute if they want, but you also have an appointed liaison in the room during the Planning Commission.
And, Mr. Mayor and Council, am I understanding correctly that you're considering Ron that position now? So he's both liaison and voting member-
January, February mark.
Until you get staffed up, and then, yeah.
Yep. We've checked his box.
He already signed up, he just didn't know it.
What if I go to Arizona?
You can zoom in.
I didn't buy a ticket yet.
Well, all right. Sue, anything else?
No.
So there we go. Public Works, Jim.
The rest of our council reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Sue, nothing else?
Nothing else.
Janet?
My only report is that I attended the Lions' breakfast. It was well-attended. I would bet they had several hundred people there by the time it was all done, so good for them.
Was that here, right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to report to. I, too, I was there.
I saw you.
Okay. Yeah, I got there early, so I think it was just a little slower. We got in and out, you know, in the first hour, I think it was, or close to, so.
Yeah, I think you were leaving or ready to leave just as I was coming in.
Yeah, so, no, it was good. And, yeah, it's good to be back and attending them. That's all I got.
All right, Jim.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Public Communications Coordinator report.
I have no official report this evening. However, I do want to just let you guys know that since you guys approved funding for two printed newsletters this year, one of those is in the works right now, and I've talked to at least, I believe, Janet, about how, she said she would like to have one of you write a little blurb in it, if you would like to. So just sort of have that on the back burner. I'm in the early stages of drafting, so I don't need copy tomorrow. But if that is something you guys would like to go forward with, I may put an official request in the future to get a little blurb from you guys. So just have it in the back burner.
So a blurb on anything we want to, like a topic or a project that we've worked on?
You got the-
I mean, you don't want to hear about ourself. I am Sue.
You're writing about all awesome public work?
Yeah!
You got the depth of-
Well, that would be a good one for this winter, for sure.
In St. Paul, you'd have to agree.
You got the depth of Janet and I's discussion, for the most part. I mean, I assume city-related business, but that might be a discussion for a workshop or something like that. But I just wanted to let you guys know, you might have a writing assignment.
Can I ask a quick question, too, for you, Connor? Is it possible to get the minutes that we're going to approve in our packet?
Oh, like they do on the Planning Commission packet?
A paper copy?
Yeah. Just because I have a hard time reading them, so I end up having to print them off, and sometimes I go through and try to find them, and I can't, because they've somehow gotten into my spam, or the unfocused part of Outlook, whatever it's called. So it just would save me time if I knew that they were part of the packet, and then I look at them and I can make my comments. It's also hard to edit on a PDF, so.
I'm concerned with that. Yes, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't know why I couldn't.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Elizabeth, City Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, we've been approached once again by our tower people. Tower Alliance is the company that approached us. American Tower is the company that rents the park and has the cell phone tower lease for the cell phone tower. And we had done this once before. We did an analysis, and we indicated to them that we were not interested in their recommendation or opportunities, I should say, or options, last time around, because we didn't think it was cost-effective. This time around, they've come back to us now, two years later, or two and a half years later approximately, and once again are asking about lease options and what other things we can do surrounding the lease payments. Currently, they pay us monthly. We get a monthly check, that's what was in the lease agreement, and that's the format we've been under, I want to say, the last 10 years, because I think we're coming up in 2024, that I think we're like 10 years into the lease agreement. So what I did this time, because this time they gave us four options versus one option the previous time, and I had Tammy look at it, because I figured we really wanted to kind of look at and see what the pros and cons of each of the options were. So what I've done is I've given you those options, and then we will talk about it at our next workshop, but I wanted to give you a heads up that this is something that the tower company is the one who prompted this. In other words, the city didn't prompt it. They approached us, and then I had them do a little bit of analysis, and then I want you to just have an opportunity to look at that. And then what we'll do at the workshop, I'll have David, who's the person from the tower company, he wanted to have like a one-on-one just to tell you why they want to do this. Like, why is the cell phone tower company looking at this? And he said he would be more than willing to do that, and he said he's done it for other communities. And Tammy said if you needed her to be there, she would certainly be online. If you didn't think you needed her, because the options were well laid out, then we would not have her on the line. But again, at least would give us a forum to talk about it, most with the tower company, just to really vet out where are they going and what do they think is going into the future. So this was just an introduction, so you had a chance to read through what Tammy's report was. So questions?
Well, I just have a question on which, do we only have one cell phone tower?
Yeah, the, the tower that they are referring to is the tower that's in our park, meaning across the street. And they know that they will not be buying an easement. You know what I mean? They will not be buying the, under the land or anything of that nature. It will still be an easement, and, and they know that we're not selling a part of our park, so they understand that. So this format is really buying out a lease option and/or either buying out the, the, I know in one of the options, it talks about a 30-year lease versus a lease in perpetuity. But our lease isn't in perpetuity, there's a definite finite time for the renewal on the lease agreement. So, but I think in this particular case, when I've looked, looked at their options, they're willing to work with the council, so if you have another option, don't hesitate to put option four or five. Because I think that they're looking, you know what I mean? He's been, he's been a minimal to, because I, I threw out a few things on it, and he came back with another option in, in big picture. So I, I think they are being pretty aggressive trying to get out of a monthly payment.
So somebody told me that there was a cell phone tower, tower that went up right by 100, it's either, it's off of Lake Drive between 141st and 45th, which is a Verizon?
That is a Verizon tower, and that is on private property.
Oh, it's on private property, okay.
Yeah, the, the, when it, when it goes up on private property, the person who owns the property gets the, the lease or whatever the agreement is. And so there is also a cell phone tower on the property that's on the corner of Zurich and Lake Drive. It happens to be in the back of that property. And at the time, when the, when the bank owned it, because at one point it went tax forfeiture and the, and the bank got it, the bank allowed the cell phone company to buy it out. So they own that easement outright. So there's no more income off of that cell phone tower.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just two comments in case I don't show up at the workshop or I'm not invited. The, I've seen this happen over and over again throughout the Twin Cities, where they're basically trying to take, capitalize their investment, whether or not it's Verizon, you know, American Tower can put anybody on, on the tower. I think the two, the two biggest issues that you should keep in mind is because it's public property, you would never give a perpetual easement. There would always be a term, I think Elizabeth already indicated that. And, and you're not going to sell public park property, which is, a perpetual easement is really tantamount to giving away your land. And, and the other thing is you want to make sure that you understand what they can put on the tower. So, you know, we understand what the tower looks like today, you know, what they can configure the tower with. We don't know what the next technology is, and so, and the next technology and the next technology. And so even in a kind of, a, a buyout of that right, you want to retain some of the controls that are in the lease agreement. And, and obviously, you know, we're going to look at whatever final documents they come up with, but just for the sake of discussion, when you're in the workshop with the telecom owners or the tower owners, those are two kind of bright considerations you want, is it, it cannot be perpetual, and you want to define what the use is, so that you have some right that if it's outside of that box, you can say, wait a minute, you know, we didn't agree that you'd have, you know, arms to the sky, or, you know, whatever it might be.
I've got a question real quick, Elizabeth. Since Sue, you brought it up, is there a new tower that just went up?
No, no new tower. I, I'm trying to think of how long the Verizon's been there. I want to say three, four years.
I always say that because I remember in the late 90s when I was on the planning commission, they had to come through the planning commission, don't they?
Yes, and they did.
And I was kind of lost when you said a new one. I missed it somewhere, the last four years.
No, it, it has, it has not been in the last four years. It was, it was prior to that.
Okay.
To remember.
One more question, Elizabeth. The packets for the planning commission and that, have we decided how that's going? Did I catch you off guard?
Yes.
Well, disregard that question.
Currently, you know, we, we're calling the planning commission members, and they're coming, they're coming to pick them up, just as the council members are, except the planning commission members don't have keys at the current time, so they're picking them up during the time we're here, and we're getting them prepared earlier, so they have a larger hourly period. However, both Public Works and, and Carissa indicated that maybe we can have an outside box, you know, that's waterproofed, that, and we've all seen them, you know, where you, a house is for sale and you want to pick up the advertisement, it's a waterproof box, you open it, you take, get your packet, but it'd be a little bit bigger in order to do that. So we do have, where we were thinking more along that lines. But if you have suggestions or you, you think of something, right now, we have not asked the, what I would call the contract deputy to deliver the packets. That really wasn't, in the past eight, 10 years, it's not been their duty unless it was like to fill in, because the CSO couldn't do it. But if you have a suggestion, I mean, we're open to what, what do you think works best? An outside box, a, a inside box, or, I mean, we'll, we'll kind of set up whatever you think is going to work.
Just a question.
I mean, I think an outside box sounds like a good idea.
Well, is there a problem with anybody coming in to pick up their packets from the inside?
The planning commission doesn't have any keys to come in.
Well, the front door, but.
Outside.
Could you put a rack in the front door, in the, in the entryway?
Well, and yes, long, long-term, we can, we can do that, because I thought the same thing. We're just having a little problem with front doors and locks, but once we get over that issue, we can certainly give them a badge to get in the front, you know what I mean, a front, the front door? You know what I mean, to get the packet if, if that's what you want? I mean.
No, I was thinking of the office doors. Show up from nine to five any day and pick up your packet when somebody's sitting in there.
And, and that's what they're doing now.
I mean, nobody's coming up here after dark to pick up their packet.
No, but sometimes it's, they don't have them done, I mean, until four o'clock, right?
You know, and that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to, we, like, for me, for the council, the deadline, it used to be noon on Friday, and that only, that only, there was a really tight window in order to get that down. Now it's eight o'clock. So you have all the way until eight o'clock, and then I can, I can get them out earlier. But I can ask Frank to, you know what I mean, to see if, it's just moving back the deadline, you know what I mean, to get, to get it done. I have a, a second item on my agenda. Mine is the Personal Committee also talked about the, the Assistant to the City Administrator position. There's only, there's only one, one motion that I'm looking for. It is an established position, it's budgeted for. The change that is going to take place is we discussed it, and we feel at this time it's appropriate to go from a 30-hour position to a 40-hour position. We talked about this during the budget, so it is budgeted for. And so the only motion that I'm looking for is to change that position from a 30-hour position to a 40-hour position, so that I can post it at, at that 40-hour position.
I move to approve Assistant to City Administrator position from 30-hour position to a 40-hour position.
Is there a second?
This is Janet's second.
Any questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Ron.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse?
I have nothing further.
I kind of missed my thing on discussion. Can I ask a question, Mayor? On this Assistant Administrator position, that's going to, that's going to be posted soon?
It will be, I just, I just needed to.
Are we, are we asking people within first if they're interested in it before, if they're qualified, if they're interested in the position?
We can, we can, we can do.
Might leave a gap somewhere else, but maybe to promote within our.
Sure. Yes, anyone from internally that, that's qualified can, can apply for it. But before I posted it, I needed to know how many hours it was. But yes, we can, we can do that.
That's just a question.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, anyone?
I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Rob.
Rob, aye.
He already did a vote. I think we already voted.
Okay, we voted, we're done.
Yeah, and then I asked a question after I screwed you up.
All right. Anything else, Elizabeth?
Nothing further, Mayor.
All right. Onto letter E. City council meeting, 1/25/23 at 6:00 PM, Planning Commission at 2, February 1st. It's almost February, everybody, at 6:00 PM. City council meeting on the 8th of February at 6:00. And the calendar is on the back. And there was a mistake on the calendar, if anybody's looking at it, cross out yesterday's meeting, there wasn't one. But the rest are as they stand. So, anything else anyone would like to talk about before we wrap it?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned at 8:04.